And so we organize these every time there's an election and look like the two opposing candidates to come and give them each the opportunity to introduce themselves, tell them why they're running, and then I'll start off and I'll ask them a question which they can answer. And the rules are basically, number one, you can ask anything you want, but you have to let the person answer the question, and it's not an argument, it's not a debate. It's, "This is important to me, what do you guys think about that?" And you can target one candidate or both candidates however you want to. Because of the setting here, it may be difficult to pick up people's questions, so we ask that. Number one, you try to be loud. Number two, I'm probably going to restate each question to make sure that when I write my story, I know what you really said rather than what you said. So if everybody's sort of under that, okay with that, then I'll introduce, we have Dave Titzel and Alicia Crank, and running for council position...
Five.
Five. And so I'll give you each, this is not like a stump speech, it's just a quick introduction to who you are and why you think you ought to be in the city council, and then I'll start to ask questions. So whoever wants to go first?
You can go first.
Okay.
My name's Dave Titzel, I'm pleased to be running for position number five for our city council, and I am a true Pugilist native. I was born in Tacoma, grew up in the Cal Valley, and moved to Edmonds in 1987, my wife and I. And we have two daughters that both went to Edmonds School District Schools, been grown in school here, they're both the Oath Penguins, so our roots run deep here in Edmonds. We chose to live in Edmonds, we wanted a place that was close to the water, that was friendly and safe and felt comfortable to us, and we looked from West Seattle to Muckel Teo, everywhere in between. We kept coming back to Edmonds, we just felt like it had great light, we loved the downtown, the charming character of downtown, and if I'm elected, I plan to work to keep that way. I'd like to see future generations enjoy what we've enjoyed. I'm retired now from the state communications, I worked there for 35 years, last 10 years was public policy director. I have 14 state territory, I worked with our state regulatory agencies in that regard, and from a public policy standpoint, I think that's going to play well on city council. I've dealt with a lot of very complex controversial issues, handled them very, very well, and I think that experience will translate well to our council. So since I am retired, I don't have time to get involved, I'll dig into this, I'll become as prepared as I can be for every council meeting, and I'll do a great job for you, so I appreciate your vote on November 3rd. Thank you.
Alicia?
Hi, hi everyone, my name is Alicia Crank, I am not a Pugilist native. I grew up in Michigan and spent a good chunk of my adulthood in California, and recently, a year and a half ago, moved here to Washington State. Though I've been up here for about 10 or 12 years on and off, my adoptive family actually goes right next door in Shoreline in the Richmond Beach area, so I've been up here fairly frequently, and they finally browbeat me and got me to move up here, and it was one of the best decisions I've ever made. I chose to live in Edmonds instead of Shoreline because it really just reminded me of my old community, and I really just love the fact that it's small and, you know, everyone kind of connects with one another, and people seem to know who the other groups are, and that's really something that I really appreciate, it's about connectivity, and having different groups in different areas kind of connect with one another. I chose to run for city council because I've always been connected in my communities that I've lived in before. In my former community where I was there for 15 years, I served on a lot of different boards and commissions, safety net services, I worked for the Chamber of Commerce there for six and a half years before I moved here, as a community leadership director, and that really was a very unique role because I got to work with every group in the community, from the large companies to small business owners, to the educators, to the nonprofits, to the neighborhood association leaders. It was really a great experience for me to have all of these things kind of together at one time, and knowing that everyone's goal was community. So I currently serve on the Sister Cities Commission here in Edmonds, I am hopefully shortly going to be appointed to the Board of Directors at a senior center, Board of Directors, and I really just wanted to take this as an opportunity to get more ingrained in this new city that I call my home.
Thank you. I'm gonna start off with a question, which is, a lot of people seem to be concerned these days, all in that the city government listens to the citizens and finds out, you know, doesn't just go do things on their own. And one of the things that has bothered me about the way some of the city council things have worked is, and luckily that person is not in the council anymore, but there's one person whose idea was always, how can we get more money out of the citizens without having to let them vote on it? And now I've just seen the state legislature has made a deal where the city can impose an additional $20 license fee to help pay for roads, but I forget, two or three years ago, we gave the citizens the opportunity to vote for a bond or an extra tax to help pay for the roads, and it was defeated by 70 percent to 30 percent. So as a city council member, are you just gonna take this extra $20, the city, or do you care whether the citizens really want to pay that extra $20 license? And I'll start with Alicia.
I think you always have to care, you know, we choose where we live and we should always have a say in what we're gonna do, whether it's as a neighborhood, as a whole city, as a part of the state. I don't believe in arbitrarily making financial decisions for anybody. There has to be a level of transparency across the board, and citizens and residents need to be able to vote and be able to say what it is that they want to participate in and why, and they should also be able to vocalize why they don't want to participate in that type of taxation.
Dave?
Well, from my perspective, I don't think we need to go there with that $20 tax. We had a very good year last year, we're having a better year this year from a tax perspective. You know, our real estate excise tax revenue is up 40 percent this year, very, very significant. So this year, the city's doing quite well, so I think we've got budget dollars now to reinvest in our street and sidewalk infrastructure. I think it's a matter of prioritizing what we want to do. I mean, we listen to our citizens, we look at our strategic action plan, get after the high priority items with the budget dollars we have, and maybe deprioritize things that are lower on that list. But I can tell you that one of the top priorities the citizens have called out in our action plan is streets, so we should be focused on that.
Okay. From that, I guess, can I get an answer, since you're saying you don't think it needs reminding you're saying it should be approved for? So if you get elected and somebody brings that up, which I guarantee they will, are you gonna vote for it or against it?
I would vote against it.
I would vote against it also.
Okay. I'm gonna turn the questions over to everybody else. Again, the rules are, ask anything you want, let the people answer, and I'm gonna try to let, make sure everybody gets to ask at least one question before anybody asks the second one. So I ask that you stand up, tell us your name, so if there's somebody that needs to get back to you, they know who they need to get back to, and then ask whatever question you want, and whoever wants to do it first can stand up and ask a question.
Don't be shy.
Resounding silence. Go ahead.
Maggie, for me, and this question's for both, and it's two-part, but short. Could you tell us, if we're to really understand what the citizens want, it's really important to meet one-on-one with them. So could you tell us how many doorbells you each have doorbailed, and the second is, talk about your base of support? Because that's the other important thing, is have a broad base of support.
Yes, sir. Well, I've been doorbelling actively for a number of months, and I've been to nearly 5,000 doors here in Edmonds. I started north of Edmonds, worked my way down through Seaview, Highway 99, Firdale, and I'm finally getting down to the wall now this week. So I've talked to thousands of Edmonds residents to get their concerns, and I can tell you the concerns are unique, depending on what part of town you're talking about. So I've heard that, and I plan to take action on that if I get elected. Regarding my base of support, I've got a very broad base of support, and I'm proud of that. I consider myself a nonpartisan, so it's important to me to have liberal and conservative support, Republican, Democrat support. So I can tell you I've got support by Mayor Erling, he's endorsing my campaign, as well as former mayors Fahy, Hawkinson, and Hall. Strom Peters is also endorsing my campaign, as well as Ruth Cagney and Cindy Ree, who are Democratic leaders in the community. I've also got support by the Teamsters, the police, the firefighters, Caskin Bicycle Club and others, so I've got a very broad base of support and I'm very proud of that, and honored to have that support. And again, I hope I have your support at the ballot. Thank you.
Unfortunately, I have not done as much doorbelling as I would have, some of you may have already read about this briefly in my Edmonds news, but unfortunately, I've been dealing with a progressive illness that I was not anticipating having to deal with, so that has sidelined me from doing a lot of the extracurricular stuff I would like to do. But in spite of that, I have made myself available to anyone that's wanted to meet with me in public. I do a standing coffee chat at Cafe Ladre on Main Street every Saturday morning from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30, where I've met with constituents there. I've reached out a lot through social media, and I've actually gotten a lot of responses back from those who are kind of the non-traditional, maybe Edmonds residents, those who are, you know, active on Facebook and Twitter, where I've been able to meet a lot of people that way, and actually gotten them thinking, "Oh my God, there's an election." So it's been really interesting being able to utilize social media in that way to let some of the maybe not so plugged-in folks in Edmonds know that, you know, there's an election going on and you really should be paying attention to it. My support also is pretty broad, even though I am a Democrat, this is a nonpartisan race, I have received support from all the legislative districts of the Democratic Party within this area. I do have support of two sitting council members currently, being President Adrian Freiles O'Neal, and also the person that's currently sitting in seat five that we're behind for Joan Blum. And then also really just, I would say grassroots, I know that, you know, endorsements are very important, I've been in the political circle for a while, both here and in other communities, but I'm really finding strength and support in just those who are in my neighborhood and those who are really starting to get engaged in the Edmonds community that are not necessarily part of a collective group.
Another question?
Alicia, you mentioned social media.
Tell us who you are first.
I'm sorry?
Tell us who you are.
Oh, oh, hi, shyly, and I live in Edmonds, and I'm a supporter of Dave Titzel. But I had a question for you, Alicia, I was looking on your Facebook page, and your prime picture is you and, are those police officers behind?
Yes, are they from my personal Facebook page?
I just went to Alicia Crank and it came up.
Well, it's not, that's not, that's not the photo that's on my campaign page, but on my personal page, and on my personal Twitter feed, there is a photo of me with a bunch of firefighters from a different community.
Okay.
But they are separate from my political pages.
Okay, so that's not your campaign?
No, it is not.
Okay. Another question?
Yes, my name is Julie Johnson, I live in Edmonds, and being new to Edmonds, Alicia, I wonder what you, what homework you have done to prepare yourself for all the different issues that are in the city of Edmonds, because every community is different.
Absolutely.
And also, how many city council meetings have you attended in the last year to also prepare yourself? So it's basically, how well have you become acquainted with our issues?
Sure. Since I moved here 16 months ago, I actually have been following city council meetings even before I even thought about running for council, because again, part of that for me is this is my new community, I want to know what's going on here, I was that active in my former community, so that wasn't anything that was new for me. So by the time I decided in April to throw my hat in the rain, I had attended a couple of in-person council meetings, but because of my career at that time, I was also regularly watching the meetings on television. I think that's a great outlet for those who can't physically be there to still be in some form of attendance if not physically being there. So I would say all but two council meetings since August of last year, I haven't watched or physically attended. In addition to the homework part of that, it's really my being able to say, how did I want to be active in this community? And a lot of that really did have to go back and look at, you know, what's, how, where is Edmonds today, and how did it get to this point? And then taking what I already knew from my former community and going, how is it better than where I was at before? And are there some areas that might be needing some attention? And really following what's been happening in the news, and really after starting my campaign, really engaging with a lot of people who wanted to share their opinions about what's happening in the community.
Another question? Okay, I'll come with another question. So, was there somebody that I didn't see?
St. Ron had his hand.
Go ahead, you go here. I'd just like you both to identify, I mean, there's all sorts of issues going on, there's what's going on with Sunset, there's what's the future for the waterfront, I mean, what do you think is the most important issue facing the council in this next coming session? And I'll start with Dave.
Okay. Well, as I've said in my campaign, you know, the most important issue I think we're facing is budget. I mean, you've all heard the term, it all comes down to money. Well, if we don't have sufficient money in our city, we're not gonna be able to accomplish what citizens want, whether it be Sunset reconfiguration, work along our waterfront, or whatever it might be. So we need to really get serious about making sure our zoning and our codes are set appropriately so we can have appropriate reasonable development where it makes sense. Places like Five Corners, I think we need to get busy up there. The Amiecos and before that, Red Apple Market has been sitting idle for a long time, looks very tired up there, so we need to get busy and revitalize that area. That'll bring some new revenue to the city. We need to get busy on Highway 99. I think we should be sitting down with developers and builders and saying, what do you folks need to make it easier to come up and help us improve Highway 99? We're gonna be investing money in the infrastructure up there in the highway and better sidewalks and landscaping, which is great, I'll make it look better. That's not gonna bring money into building, mixed-use stuff building, for example. That's what we need. We need to focus on the revenue side at the same time as we're controlling expense, to get our budget dollars in line so we can accomplish what the citizens want.
I would say it would be a tie between physical and economic development, just along the lines of what Dave said. You know, we really need to start looking at what development projects need to happen and where. We've already identified areas like Five Corners and also Highway 99. And again, looking at not just mixed-use development, but what are the best ways to even create neighborhoods within the neighborhood? How are we making sure that we're building kind of these urban centers where people can, you know, live, shop, in some cases, work, if it's that type of mixed-use development where they don't always have to get behind the wheel of a car to be able to go someplace and get their groceries or get their dry cleaning or their daily needs? Economic development also is a part of that, and that falls into the budget as well. I know that there's been a lot of emphasis on bringing in new business, but I think, especially as someone that's worked at a Chamber of Commerce, one of the things you really want to be careful about is not spending so much time romancing new business and ignoring current business. I think downtown and Edmonds in general is in a really unique situation where you can build up the current businesses, you know. It's not about building buildings, but building up the existing businesses and giving them more traction to be able to do things. You know, there are cities that would clamor to have the amount of traffic that this area gets, especially downtown, and mainly it is because of the ferry. But it's that, how do we get those folks out of their cars at least temporarily to be able to utilize businesses down here? Part of that too is, I think of a mixed-use development that could eventually maybe be somewhere in downtown. Someone had mentioned before about having some satellite parking somewhere. There was one community that I saw that actually mixed in mixed-use parking and city art at the same time. So they had a mixed-use development where the ground floor was retail, the other three floors were specifically parking, and for the art element of it, at one corner of it was all stained glass. So it wasn't an eyesore, it wasn't, so you had this satellite parking that was in the downtown area that brought people in, you know, to come downtown, have dinner, meet friends, what have you, get back in their cars, go on the ferries, or what have you. So I think there's some interesting things that could be done that are already in the thought pipeline.
Okay, Ron, do us, ask you a question now?
Ron Wongo, this question is for you, Ms. Crank, I was just wondering if you could tell us why you would make a better council member than your opponent?
I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure I get this, so I can, why does she think she'd make a better council member than? Who?
My opponent.
Than a opponent, okay. Which would be me.
That would be him. That's kind of a tricky question, because I don't believe that he would be a horrible city council person.
There's no reason to do this. That's gonna take three years, I think.
And I would say that, I would say in my campaign so far, one of the things that I have been, for lack of a better word, dismayed about is this sense of, you know, if you're 4-1, you have to be completely against this other person and have negative feelings, and I just don't feel that way. I don't think campaigns have to run that way. I'm glad that I'm running against Dave, I think Dave's a great guy. I don't think that there's anything in his background that's a red flag, you go, "Oh no, he wouldn't be the right person for this job." We just, I think we just happen to be two people who bring unique sets of skills into this role, and I think the city would benefit from one way or the other.
May I, may I add on to that?
Sure.
I think Alicia's right. You know, I've come to know Alicia and I respect her, I like her a great deal, she brings a lot to the table. So I think it's up to all of you to just listen to what we're saying, listen to our backgrounds and see what you think. Alicia brings a new perspective, you know, that from someone who hasn't lived here a long time, like bring a different perspective. It's up to you to listen to what you're hearing and make your own choices at the ballot. But again, I think a great deal, Alicia.
So you guys are both showing an entire lack of understanding of the political process.
And trust me, I've worked on political campaigns on multiple levels, whether it's state or local or even nationwide. I think it's a choice as to how you decide to go about it. My livelihood is not to spend time being upset about somebody who I don't even know, or, you know, to feel like if they're against me, then I need to go after them. That's not my stance, and if someone else's stance is that way, then that's their thing. So yeah.
Can we have another question? Yes, sir.
David Preston, regarding access to the water, this is for both of you.
Sure.
Regarding access to the waterfront and the study that's going on with the city, the NSF, water, the ferry system, and the port and the city, what are your thoughts or gut feel on what might be the best way to get emergency vehicles to the west side of the tracks to help out the port and other people by the ferry boat and the rafts landing in that area? What are your thoughts that could help us out there?
My short answer honestly, because there's so many components to this, and I know that people have been kind of asking for kind of this short, built-in answer, and I just don't think there is one. There's gonna have to be some major consensus building that comes about this, and some people are gonna be happy, I think everyone will be happy at some point, but not on this equal level. As far as the emergency vehicles are concerned, I think the best solution is a bridge. I know there's been some talk about digging under, and I think that's not a very good idea, there's way too many variables that could make that go way to the side. And the other part of that too, as far as moving the ferries and everything else, I've spent a lot of time with residents over at Point Edwards, they actually invited me and took me on a two-hour tour, you know, of their area, and gave me some, you know, the history of how this area came to be. And, you know, it might sound silly to say, you know, to be concerned about their views, but the reality is, if you're a homeowner, you purchase your area for a reason. And I would not want to see that area change if it doesn't have to because for some political reason of moving something back and forth. So that's why I say that there has to be, you know, some major consensus building that comes across. But as far as your direct question about the emergency vehicles, I would propose a bridge as opposed to digging under.
Well, yeah, my concern is the study that's gonna occur over the next year about the alternatives is gonna take time. And after the study's complete, the council and the city will have to choose the best option, determine funding options, et cetera. It's gonna take many years before you have a permanent plan down there. So I tend to agree, I think you need to look to a temporary solution to get access vehicles over there for medical emergencies. You know, we used to have a bridge over there that took oil from the boats that docked along the waterfront up over the tracks to the oil tanks. So I'm wondering if that permit might still be valid for that old bridge that used to exist, and we could recreate that as a one-lane structure, primarily for pedestrians, but if need be for a one-lane temporary access means for emergency vehicles. I would just hate during the next two or three years, or however long it would take, to get the permanent solution built for someone to die down there, if they die, or from a heart attack, the senior center, choke on something at the restaurant. There's all kinds of options for people to be injured or worse down there, so we need to sooner rather than later get after some sort of temporary access, and I tend to agree. Some sort of a small, one-lane access structure, I think makes a lot of sense.
Someone else? Get in the back, okay? Get back to me now. The city has decided to add a diversity commission, but unfortunately, they don't seem to have enough people volunteer to be part of the diversity commission. And I know the police chief very well, I try to find out from him what kind of issues the police are having with different types of people. I, being a guy with no legs, think worry about what the city does for the disabled people. You know, what is this diversity commission gonna be, and how can they get enough people in it to have it make some sense? I mean, everybody writes in the Miami's News, it's a wonderful idea, but nobody volunteers to be part of the commission. So what can we do to fix that?
I was, can I go first or you say?
Maggie.
I've been thinking about this a lot, because I did actually hear about the potential of this commission coming to fruition several months ago, and one of the commissions I sat on back in my former community was our human relations commission, and I sat on it for about eight years. I think part of it, I think there's two parts. I think one part is, there's some discord within the community that I think that we don't like to publicly talk about, it just kind of vents itself on my Edmonds news and other places, where, you know, people are trying to take in out their frustration, like people are pissed off here, you know? There's some people that are pissed off, so let's just say it, they're pissed off, and they're pissed off at the government, and it's, they want to do something about it. So I think there's some level of feeling like, if they do this, it's not gonna turn into anything. So I think there's just some sense of feeling resigned there. But I think the other part too is really being able to flesh out what diversity commission means. I think when people think diversity, they think color or race, and one of the things that we did, and I actually did talk to Carrie Height about this, is that one of the things that we did in another community was, we took that word of diversity and really looked at it as, we did this program called a civility roundtable. And what we would do is that on a quarterly basis, we would kind of hold these community meetings about a specific topic that was pertinent in that area. For example, the city I was in had a day worker center, and of course, people had their feelings about day workers one way or the other. So we had this, you know, civility roundtable meeting where people from the community can come and talk about this topic. And it just kind of went off from education to other things, so I think that being able to rebrand what diversity commission means would really bring people in, as opposed to thinking that it has to do with being a minority of some sort, or a physical minority. So I think that rebranding and kind of defining more what this commission is, instead of just giving it the name Diversity Commission, would be good.
David, you have a comment?
From my perspective, the diversity commission is a needed facility in this town. You're probably aware that my central campaign theme is be included. What that means to me is, I've been attending council meetings in person for the better part of the year, nearly everyone, and I can tell you that very, very rarely do people of ethnic minority origins, such as maybe folks immigrated here from Korea or China or Mexico, wherever it might be, they don't come to the council meetings. They're intimidated, I think, by coming up and talking to the council with the microphone. I don't like to do it, intimidates me. So I can imagine if you had a language, Barry, how you'd feel about that. So we need the diversity commission, I think, to get outreach to those people, make them feel like they're part of our city. You know, we're 20 percent of our populace now is non-Caucasian, and that number's growing. So we need to embrace that and make sure we include these people, as I said, be included is my thing in the city government's process. So what I've done personally, I've got some folks that I know, one in particular, Hispanic woman, I've encouraged her to apply, I think she has applied, so I guess I would encourage all of you here, if you have folks that would be interested, that think you would be, you think would be a good fit for that commission, encourage them to apply. Let's flush that out and get that commission up and running and make it work.
I'm just gonna keep going until somebody else stands up. So Alicia, you mentioned something that rang a bell, you said a civility?
Roundtable.
Civility roundtable. The city council needs some civility. I don't know if you've watched the meetings over the last year, but it's, and personally embarrassing for me, people lie on the Edmonds, and they say, "What in the world is going on with your city council up there? Are they yelling at each other, are they calling each other liars?" What can you do to help turn the city council into a more civil group? Or what do you think they should do to make it, you know, you can't solve it yourself, so...
I mean, I think the reality is, everyone is their own boss, you know, they have to make their own decisions, how they want to act. You know, they have to make their own decisions, how they want to act. You can only, you can only control how you act and you can hopefully be able to influence the actions of others. I have been stunned by some of the activity that I've seen and I, yeah. You know, and I've had people, other people watch me go, are you sure you want to be a part of this? You know, what are you doing? And, I mean, I think it comes down to personal responsibility, you know, people, and I've said this to council publicly, is that, you know, none of you ran to be elected to do this. You did not run to be, to have public, you know, infighting. And this is not why people elected you. This is not why people are entrusting you with decision-making. And so I think a lot of it really has to do with being able to separate the personal side of maybe some of these issues with what you were professionally there to do. And again, maybe it's just from what my previous roles have been where I've always been very in the public in my previous careers, is that I couldn't afford to react in that way because I'm representing my organization, I'm representing certain people, I'm representing a brand. So my hope would be that, you know, in the next cycle, whoever's on council, that there would be some consensus amongst the group to be able to separate personal from professional and remember who they work for.
Okay, thank you. David, how are you going to solve this issue?
Okay, well, a solution probably isn't something as a magic wand, kind of an item. But let me tell you that in my career with the phone company, I was a member of, a number of large teams. I managed a number of large teams. So our council is a team. They're also a team with the mayor and the mayor's staff. So when you start functioning like a team, and I think the two keys are respect and decorum. And quite often I don't see that. Again, I've been attending council meetings for a long time. If we start working toward those two things, as you say, whoever's on council, I think we're going to go a large distance toward achieving that. Because from my perspective, if you're elected and you agree to accept the role, it comes with a condition, you treat your fellow council members with respect. It's just a condition. If you can't do that, don't take the job.
Hi, I'm Larry Vogel and many of you know me because of my connection with my Edmonds News, but I'm not here to ask a question from that perspective. I have also, for the last eight years, served on the Edmonds Historic Preservation Commission. For two and a half of those years I was chair. And I also serve on the Board of Directors of the Edmonds Museum. And my question is coming from that perspective, okay? There's been talk lately and I've heard more and more talk of the possible establishment of an historic district in downtown Edmonds. We have many historic buildings here. We have some rich defining character. And there's understandably some questions about this, especially from the folks that it most directly affect, i.e. property owners and business owners. There are concerns about how this might affect their ability to change the look of their building, to paint it for instance, to put a door on to change. We both have. We do maintain the register of historic places and we have lost one property off of the register of historic places because of this. The property owner wanted to do something, it was just not keeping the historic character of the building. And we almost lost one of the defining buildings in downtown Edmonds, the Schumacher Building, over this. I'd like to know how you folks feel about the idea of an historic district in Edmonds, the value of our local heritage and history and culture here as pertains to the history of the town. I don't care if you're first.
Can you take a break? Well, the reason people come to Edmonds, I think, is because of the quaint town. We have a beautiful, well-preserved town. We have buildings that look much like they did at the turn of century, like the Schumacher Building, like our theater, like the reliable floor coverage building, that's an old building as well. So we have buildings like that here that are very charming. They're part of the allure of Edmonds. I think we need to protect them. So I would be in favor of pursuing a historic district. I know that there are concerns about it from a business owner perspective. I think some people get concerned that it's like the National Historic Register. If you get on that register, you can't do anything to change your building. As I understand it, our historic register is not like that. There's a lot more flexibility for the building owner. So I think a large part of that is defining the area. You can't make it too big, I'm afraid, or you're going to scare the business owners off down here. I think it's fairly localized. We do have truly historic buildings in the core part of our downtown. And reach out to those property owners and tell them that this is not going to harm your ability to manage your property, to make changes. We'll work with you to determine how the changes should and could happen and offer resources in that regard. But make sure they know that it's not a threat to them owning the property.
In summary, I think it makes sense where it makes sense. It can't be something that's across the board. You have to look at what makes sense to the current businesses that might be a part of those specific buildings, if it makes sense for them to be classified that way. Then I also think that also needs to, we also need to make sure that we're explaining and understanding what that means. And I think that's where sometimes the tanglement comes in because there might be a general thought of what it means to be this historical preservation area where there might be varying levels of it. So I think just making sure that we know that, you know, one, what type we're going to do and two, if it makes sense for that particular area to put it in place.
Hi, Alice, Alicia. I don't even know if this pertains to the role of the city council, but as I've been sitting here thinking about the questions and how people are reflecting on the character of the city, realize that I have a concern about residential area that is very nearby here and how that's impacted by a festival every summer, a very noisy music festival out there. And I am a minority. There are lots of people that enjoy that festival, but I have met and talked to quite a few people who feel like they either have to leave town or have to sleep for the day if they live very close to that festival. And to me, it's kind of an idea about defining whether this area is residential and whether it supports residents or is it in transition or is it meant to be some other sort of area.
Do you think we shouldn't have that? Is that what you're saying?
I think we should have it somewhere else if possible.
Another city?
The impact, well, I don't know. I don't know.
I'm going to have a.
You know, it's a big city. I don't have to know where the areas are that we support something.
I have a tougher time hearing this. So whoever answers this, if you could restate the question so I can understand it quite better.
It sounds like she is a downtown resident that lives by where they do the Taste of Edmonds.
Right.
And she is, and as someone that lives very close by, she and other neighbors are probably slightly perturbed by the noise and the traffic that comes through. If that's something that's a city thing. It is part of, within this, you know, city boundaries, it's a festival that is sponsored by the Edmonds Chamber of Commerce in partnership with the city and I would hope other businesses. There is, I have no perfect answer to that. Just about every community that has these types of festivals, and I've personally put these on for six years in my former hometown, and it was right downtown. And it was, again, it was the same situation where, you know, you have residential on both sides of the main drag. So there was always going to be some folks that were not happy with the weekend festival. Some would take that as an opportunity to go out of town or try to make the most of it and have friends come over and parking would always be an issue as well. The best solution that we came up with in those situations as a member of the chamber and as someone who worked at the chamber, was to make sure that we really outreach to the community and let them know, hey, this is coming up. Accepted feedback from them about, you know, what they liked and what they didn't like about it. Try to find some ways to appease the majority because you can't make everyone happy in that situation. But we saw that the best solution was making sure that we were communicating with the residents in that area as opposed to just saying, we have a permit, we can do this, so suck it up. Which is probably what I'm guessing what you're kind of feeling like. So again, it's not a perfect solution, you know, because it's always something that brings people here and of course you want that to add to, you know, the economy of the downtown area and the city in general. But I would say there should probably be a greater level of communication maybe between the chamber, the city and the residents, even if it means that you have to make the first move, even if it would be more ideal if they made the first move. But that would kind of be my thought on that.
Well, from my standpoint, it's a difficult problem and I appreciate what you're saying because we live very near Civic Playfield. In fact, we live on the alley near the side of Civic Playfield. And believe me, when the bands are playing and the PAs turn up loud, we can barely hear in our own unit. And my wife will test for that. So, you know, so we basically just put up with it and either sit in our deck and try to enjoy it or go and have lunch somewhere or do something.
Just embrace it and invite friends over. Somebody, you might be the people I've heard of.
Yeah.
But, you know, the Chamber of Commerce relies on that festival to fund our fireworks show, which we all enjoy. So, you know, there's a put and take there. One thing I will say is I'm not convinced that we need to have that PA system quite that loud. It is like, it's like a rock show loud and it's basically to entertain the folks in the beer garden there. So I don't know why we couldn't work with the chamber and possibly see if they can dial that down a notch or two to not bother folks like you, maybe not bother us as much who live right next to it.
That would be a nice.
It's a compromise.
There are a number of people who write into my Edmonds News about how city government never gets input from citizens. And this was my idea on a way to do that if I was on the city council. Now I'm inviting you guys to do it. Of course, the people who write all those complaints, none of them would have shown up to you. But it brings up a different question or the same question of what is your plan to get more involvement for the citizens so they don't feel like they've been neglected?
And that's actually been one of, in my top four goals, one about, you know, open government and transparency. Part of that falls into making sure that we're getting out to the community as opposed to just kind of being in one place, being, you know, council chambers where people come to you. Sometimes that's just not possible. And we, this area is growing more diverse, not just in, you know, racial and ethnic, but also in age and other demographics. So one of the things that I saw that was really successful was being able to have these neighborhood meetings where you would, again, it's not the entire council coming, but maybe two or three without violating the Brown Act, that would, you know, have these quarterly meetings in different neighborhoods around the city that were, you know, posted and everyone knew they were there. So that gave an opportunity for residents who would not normally come for whatever reason, whether it's because they were uncomfortable coming to city hall or just from time constraints or family constraints, they had an opportunity to have this extra way to be able to connect with their council members and it would also be in their neighborhood. So it's more of a focused conversation and being able to bring something back to the full council. I think otherwise, again, I'm currently, I have my standing coffee meetings that I do Saturday mornings and that's something I would like to continue to do if I'm elected.
So are those publicized, so please?
They are, they've been on my website, yes. Yes. And I think the overarching thing is just making sure that we're creating additional avenues for people to be able to connect with council. Again, some people are better on social media than they are in being somewhere, you know, coming someplace in person. Not to say that what's here now isn't good, but again, it's about how do we create other avenues for people to be able to communicate.
And I agree, I think getting out of the community is a very good thing. One concern I would have is some people, if they don't have time to come to a council meeting, they have time to have time to come to the town hall meeting for all the community. So we need to reach out to those folks too and connect with them the way they want to be connected with. I talked to a mom a couple of weeks ago and she's a working mom, has two kids in school. And she said, I've got no time to get involved in city government. And I said, what would work for you? How would you like to be heard at city government? And she goes, well, what if we had a deal where we send an email to council and have the city clerk read it into the record in the three-minute open comment segment? And that may be something to consider where we let people write in with that way because the council doesn't respond anyway. It's just read into the record. So at least that's a way of being heard for people who just absolutely don't have the time to carve out. Beyond that, we need to get out to the various ethnic minority segments, as I mentioned. We have a very large Hispanic, Latino segment here, very large Asian segment, Korean and Chinese largely. We also have a very large and growing African segment from countries like Gambia, Eritrea, Ethiopia, places like that. I've met, I've met these neighbors here, they're, I've talked to them about our doorbell. Again, they feel kind of insulated, I think. They tend to band together with their countrymen and don't really feel connected here. Need to find a way to get out and talk to them as well. I can tell you just very quickly, I was invited to a prayer meeting, an African Muslim prayer meeting several weeks back at the conference center here. And I went in, I was given two minutes to address the group. I went to the gym and the gym was full of guys in full weight garb on their prayer rugs kneeling. And so I was invited in to address them and I did. And I said, I want to hear from you around what your concerns are about Edmonds. And so we need that contact and find a follow-up on that. We need to get out and meet all the various ethnic segments where they are in a way that's comfortable to them.
Can I add one mic as well today?
Sure.
I have the other thing that I, that I want to talk to people about and they've kind of scratched your head and say, hey, that's actually a pretty good idea. The council meetings in other communities I've been in, one of the things that I found that was interesting that we don't do here currently is that during the council meetings, public audience comment is at the very beginning and it's on non-agendized items. There isn't an opportunity to make public comment before council takes action on something. And that was some, that's something that's been foreign to me. I haven't been in other communities where that hadn't been allowed before. And so for some of those who have felt like they don't want to come to council meetings, it's because they felt like it's more of a spectator sport because they can't do anything or feel like they can say anything about something that's coming, that's on the agenda that night. So one of the things I would explore doing is seeing if that would be a possibility for council, whether I'm on council or not, but to see that be changed a little bit to allow some form of public comment before a vote goes to council on something that's happening that night.
Thank you. Somebody else? Okay, so number one, I want to thank you both for wanting to work with the city of Edmonds and being willing to devote your time and efforts to get elected. And I know in fact, certain readers of my Edmonds News again, who seem to hate the mayor and think everything he does is bad and that he ought to be replaced, yet no one wants to run against him. So you two both should be applauded for at least being willing to run for office and wanting to get involved. And I appreciate you all for doing that. I'm respectful of your time. If you want to make a statement after these questions and tell us one more time how to contact you, how to find your website, how to donate if somebody wants to, how to do whatever they need to do to be involved. And I really appreciate you taking the time to come do this. And you guys can choose who goes first again because you're both cordial, so.
I'm going to go first.
That's fine. No, we don't.
Well, again, thank you all for coming out. I know you have other places to be and warmer places to be because it's getting a little cold in here. You can find my information online. My website is aliciainedmonds.com. I also have that same thing on Facebook and Twitter. Again, I really enjoy, I love this city. I fall more and more in love with it every day and that's not just a thing, it really is. What I would say is, you know, I kind of saying, harping on what Carrie just said, which is I was really surprised to not see more people running. I'm not used to seeing a race where there are seats that are uncontested.
Oh, I don't mind it one bit.
I'm sure you don't. So again, I wanted to get involved and whether or not, you know, if I don't end up being elected, it's not the last that you're going to see of me. Because I have things I want to see changed and added on to, so I may end up being a thorn in his side at some point, should he be elected. But I just really think that, you know, community is important, connectivity is important and to not be afraid of something or someone that's new. I don't want to change Edmonds. I want to see how it can help make it better in some places where people feel like it could use a little work. I'm a big believer in business and economic development. I'm a big believer in ethnicity and community and just kind of having everyone come together. I love volunteering. I love volunteering, I probably want to get on way too many boards and commissions before I start to say no, but that's just who I am as a person.
I have a vacancy on historic preservation.
But again, I think you have two great people to choose from, and I guess my one takeaway from all of this is that, again, I'm appreciative that I have an opponent that's not evil. And that I hope that with some of the experience that I've had where you have to be one way or the other, I hope that if anything, one of the lessons that comes out of this is that you can be cordial and work together, even if you're going after the same thing, and that it doesn't have to end after election day. So I hope you will support me, we always support one of us, but either way, I really hope that you actually get out and vote, and I think that's what's really important. And please encourage others to get out and do their civic duty as well.
Well, Edmonds is my home, it's been my home for a long time, it'll be my home for a long time into the future. So as I mentioned earlier, what attracted me here was the friendliness of Edmonds, the character of Edmonds, the great light we have behind generally a west-facing slope. There's a lot of great things about Edmonds that we appreciate. We need to protect those, and at the same time, accommodate growth that's going to happen. You know, we grew by 500 people last year, over 500 actually, which means that for the next 10 years, we can expect between 5,000 and 6,000 new people living here. So we have to be smart about that, manage growth, focus on making growth happen where we want it to happen, like Hywin 99, like Five Corners, places like that. So let's get after managing that, make it happen the right way for Edmonds, and make Edmonds a great place in the future. So as I mentioned earlier, I'm retired, I've got the time to be involved in the city government, I have the desire, I have a strong business background, I think our council needs that, and I think I can make a positive impact for all of you. If you have questions, I'm more than happy to take phone calls, so my phone number's And my website for the campaign is titzel4, it's the number four, council.org. And feel free to look at that, learn more about me, see my kids, and all that, but I appreciate your support. But thank you. Thank you both. Thank you to all you folks who've shown up tonight and have some interest in our city government. Thank you to Cafe Louvre for hosting us. Tip generously, make your friends come down here and have coffee and buy something to eat from now on. And thank you again all, thank you both for coming, and thank you everybody else for coming. Thank you.